This afternoon is kind of a different work session. Different in the sense that there not a lot of, I've never got any items on agenda other than Adam talking about where we are and some of the things that we need to do in the future, some of the goals and objections, objections that you may have, some that we have, and some of the process that we intend to follow. We had a president's meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to sit through the entire meeting. But we want to talk about the things that we see as important to the community college system. Now, this will not be all inclusive. I'd like to say, there's been a lot of communication with a lot of presidents and other staff members that are involved with what we do statewide. And I've asked my staff, or several of my staff members, to participate and lead the discussion and presentation. Again, this is kind of a dry run in trying to prepare for a presentation in the legislative environment for the president, pro tempore of the senate. Before we do that, I'm going to ask Boone to come up and give you a real quick, brief, I mean, short summary of what's happened in the legislature since he reported to you earlier.
So, as I said this morning, the senate committee, Education Budget Committee was meeting while the Board of Trustees meeting was happening this morning. They have since passed out an education budget that will be before the full senate tomorrow, which will probably make for a long day of debate. In the senate, as far as the community college system goes, the budget is level funded from where we're at this year, with the one exception of an increase in 1.75 million for workforce development initiatives. So, that's where we're at right now. Of course, a long way to go in the process, but that's the first step, and we'll keep you all informed as it moves through the process.
We, we're kind of proud of that. That's not nearly what we'd like to have, but I think I'm correct. We're the only higher ed environment that got any increase, and I think that's a good statement. So, with that, I'm not sure which one of you plan to start. Russ, Russ has been leading the effort on strategic plan, the development of that, and so I've asked him, Jeff, and Susan if they will, us have an open discussion and explanation of some of the things that we think we need to be doing.
Thank you Chancellor. And to that end of an open discussion, we're going to join you all here so we can get your feedback as we go through what we initially put together. Yes. Can you set up the PowerPoint for us? I think the board members all have a copy of the strategic plan in front of you that you've all seen before several months ago, and we haven't necessarily sat down like this to go through it or over it. But what we want to do very, during this time, is to go over each of the six goals that you see in there, and kind of specifically touch on each one of them, reading them with you, but then more importantly, getting any feedback from you on any specific high points that you want us to cover. For, just to start us off, one of the things that we know from a strategic planning perspective, and that, in order to the timing that we wanted to do this, we didn't go through the steps of working with all of you and our institutions across the state to revisit our mission and vision. So, what you have here is what the system has had for some time. So, this very quickly, the mission hasn't changed. It's provide unified system of institutions dedicated to the excellent academic education, adult education, and workforce development. And if you remember from the time that you started, where these have been kind of those three legs of the stool that are often talked about for the Alabama Community College system. So, you have those three pieces. And then the vision, which again hasn't changed, but to go over it is develop an educated, prosperous population, providing an affordable pathway to help citizens of any walk or stage of life succeed through quality education and training, a community college system where education works for all. And I think those are some of the key words as we built this strategic plan, is really looking at building that system and then ensuring that we have that education for all perspective as we go through and work on this. The other key piece that I want to touch on, that as we had conversations, as the Chancellor mentioned with the presidents, as well as some of their staff, and with all of you, and having listened to what is important to you as a board, one of the key overall components of the strategic plan is the recognition and the incorporation of the necessity to build those strong relationships with our K-12 partners, our four-year partners in business and industry. Every meeting I've been in from the board and the work sessions, and even from what the governor was talking about yesterday in terms of the attainment goal, much of what you'll see in here that we've been talking about for over a year, and we've been working on in the strategic plan, works towards that attainment goal, that 65 by 2025, and looking at how we help Alabama become more ready for workforce as well as transfer, and you'll see those components in here. So, any questions on that, the initial pieces we look at it? All right, so that first overall goal is looking at building a unified and collaborative system. And one of the pieces I want to highlight in that, not read certainly all of it to you, as I mentioned in terms of that overall perspective of looking at our partnerships with K-12, four-year institutions, business and industry, and a key piece of this is really building in that transparency, being able to make those data-driven decisions and a lot of the work that you've been looking at in terms of getting information for all of you to be those judiciary, be able to have responsibility and be able to look at what information we need to be effective and efficient in those things that we're doing. So, some of those key indicators of progress, and one of the things I wanted to share with you as well, in looking at the goals as well as these indicators, really this is a large initial framework for us. The next step to this, and Chancellor mentioned in your board meeting today, is that each of these indicators will be able to put numbers to our will be measurable outcomes. And eventually, what we want to do, once we have that baseline, we'll be working with our college presidents as well as staff and yourselves to develop those targets of where we want to go. And while we've been making a lot of progress on what you'll see here, kind of those steps that we'll want to do is say, where is it that we really want to go, how do we measure that? Because you know that lovely ax, you know, about measure what you value and then value what you measure. Yes, please.
One other key component of that, you know, when you start the indicators, the type of stats, is the timing. So, in addition to adding the numbers, when we place some type of timing, we want this Q2, you know, in the 2018 or so at least.
Yeah. In fact, what we're doing, our initial component piece of that is we have a spreadsheet, excuse me, Excel spreadsheet, that has the indicator, the goal that we have, who's responsible for it, as well as the time, and any particular resources that we need to be able to move forward. And that will help us keep track of where we are and to be able to provide updates. So, a couple of these key indicators that I wanted to highlight in here, and the first one, Susan, if you wouldn't mind giving an update on for the...
Good afternoon. Certainly, if you're talking about building a foundation or a framework for a unified and comprehensive community college system, it has to start with the rules or the board policies and procedures. And it's really about ensuring that our colleges receive appropriate guidance as well as parameters in which they have to work, and that's through the development of policies that are approved by this board, and then procedures that are issued by our chancellor. So, first of all, I want to thank you all because it's been a long slog, I know, for a couple of years, particularly with the policy committee working through a mountain of policies that we need approval on. And they have done a fantastic job and have contributed greatly to really rich discussions and creation of board policies. Where we are right now is we have a majority of many of the series completed, but we're looking at two major series coming down the pipe. The first one has to do with student policies, and that is currently sitting with the board policy committee, and those are our 800 series policies. Many of them have to do with admission, they have to deal with also scholarships that are institutional scholarships that are offered by our colleges. So, we are hopeful that we will be able to bring them to you in a work session in April with expected approval of the policies in May. There are a couple that we have also attached to those from the 300 series, the financial series, because we think that it makes a lot of sense to read those in tandem with our student policies. The second big group that will come shortly after that has to do with instructional policies. And they are, my understanding is they are ready really for discussion, but we are really trying not to overload the policy committee right now. These groups are in excess of, I think, 12 policies in each one. It's a considerable amount of information, so we just don't want to overload them. But our expectation is that by early summer, we will be done with most of our policies and procedures. There are some that are going to take a lot more discussion with the board because they really talk about charting the future of the system, for instance, service area discussions. But the majority will be done by summer, and we really appreciate your hard work on that. Oh, any questions?
And a few of these other ones on here, we've already received updates in your board meetings, so for example, hiring permanent innovative qualified leaders for ACCS colleges. Chancellor talked to you about the searches for Shelton State as well as Bishop State. The administrative system software, just a real quick update on that, you did hear from Liz Murphy, the CEO of Campus Works, and kind of got an update on that report. One of the other updates I wanted to share with you is at the end of April, I have an opportunity to attend a conference in Dallas. It's the Second Annual Shared Services and Higher Ed Conference, where there are institutions and systems represented from all over the world, primarily in the United States though, that have been doing shared services and have implemented successfully over the last decade. And it's a great opportunity to go and to learn, and they actually promise actionable takeaways. So, as we look at the reports that we got back from Campus Works, and we continue to analyze how we want to move forward with our colleges, again, using that terminology of being more effective and efficient in the resources that we have, there is that learning opportunity at the end of April that, looking forward to it and bringing it back and getting more feedback, not only from the board, but from our institutions, and identifying how we should be moving forward with the potential of shared services opportunities. The other note on here is you've heard the Chancellor talk many times about the importance of professional development for ACCS staff, our colleges, and their employees. Well, one of the things that we've done is the System Office, and we credit our instructional and student services team, is we actually built a professional development calendar that we now have online that highlights the opportunities that are available. We're getting that information out to our colleges to be able to share those opportunities. And again, it's one to be more transparent of those opportunities that we have, as well as trying to get greater access in those opportunities for people to become more proficient and develop in their specific disciplines. Yes, sir?
Is that a requirement? Is it elective, if you will, for faculty and staff considering...
Typically, well, and I would let our presidents address how they do that on their campuses. What I'll share with you is how, what we've done in the System Office when we do our evaluations, for example. One of the steps of the evaluation process is we go through and talk about how we progressed through the year, but then kind of that last step is to look at where the system is moving forward for the next year, and then working with your individual team members and setting those goals, and then identifying potential professional development opportunities. So, we actually have built those goals and opportunities within our evaluation system here in the System Office, and I'm sure our colleges use similar. Any other? And one of the, and the last thing I'll mention under this first goal is one of the things you have a subcommittee working on is the reviewing the compensation to attract higher and retain qualified faculty and staff. I know you have a board committee that's actually looking at those pieces, and it's been a significant part of the conversation that you've all had, either in work sessions or in your board meetings. But that first goal of building a unified and collaborative system, I think really sets the tone of us trying to come together as a system and then truly being that resource, not only to be effective in the system, but for our colleges, so we can best support them. And ultimately, why we're here is for the students' success and meeting the needs of business and industry. And with that as a segue, I want to turn it over to Jeff and to talk about the second goal, which is workforce economic development.
Thank you. Some of these goals you've seen before in front of you, I'll just kind of highlight them. Please ask me if you have any questions on them. But goal number two is workforce development. This includes ATN and adult education, and now actually, one of the last things I'll mention too is prison education, then I'll ask Susan, and a few more things after that too. And we're really excited about some things we're doing there. But workforce development is a key component of the ACCS mission. Today's ever-evolving technologies require the ACCS to be more flexible, responsible more quickly, anticipate rapid changes in the marketplace. Basically, what we're telling our companies, and a lot of you have seen that and been there with me, that we're 24/7 like our clients are, and so we're proving that to the companies across the state. I think they're excited about that, that we're there to listen to their needs and try to find solutions to help them be successful. And by meeting these current emergency workforce needs of businesses and industries, the ACCS meets the needs of the students, provided them a career pathway and critical opportunities for lifelong learning. And to address these anticipated workforce needs, we must cultivate stronger partnerships with K through 12 in all different areas of higher ed across our state and business leaders throughout various programs. We're on the Workforce Council, we're on the Workforce Development Board, we'll work with all the regional councils, we'll work with chambers across the state, and we continue to meet with companies in small pockets or individually to listen to their needs and really focus on high wage, high demand employment opportunities. We recently rolled out the latest dual enrollment courses that were fun for next year, and we used the new software that we purchased to really do by region workforce occupational forecast, high wage, high demand, and it really helped us focus in on different types of jobs that we need to really fund to help us grow our economy and our GDP. Any questions on that before I kind of shift over to any of the goals? Goal, goal number one, really I'm going to kind of go in sequence of workforce, ATN, adult ed, and then finish it off with some comments about prison education as well. But really, goal number one is to develop and deliver customized training programs across the state through our department. And we're actually building up our team to be able to do that. I think you met some of our team players last board meeting that we've added. We're working with companies, we're actually partnering with several schools across the state to design, develop, and deliver customized training for them, to deliver for them. I know Dr. Muddlin, or Sam Muddlin, today was, we were talking about another project that Trenum's going to do. We're going to meet with them as early as next week to talk about with that company. So, we'll be able to design that program, really develop and deliver it, but get Trenum to have credit for that. So, they'll be the ones that actually be the ones to say that they did it, even though we're kind of handing it off to them, and doing a train to train for them to continue to do those on a long-term basis. Also, as you all know, we're developing and implementing nationally-recognized certification programs. Some of the great things we're doing there is the MSSC certification program. We're actually, and I was telling Jimmy Baker the other day about this, we're going to be the first state nationally to ever roll this out as statewide. And so, I think we ought to be really excited about that. Kind of talks, and Christian and I were talking about this the other day, that we actually, with the attainment goal that the governor mentioned yesterday at 65%, this is going to help us reach that goal faster. And so, I think it's going to really help us with dual enrollment, preparing students coming out of the high schools, going to work, articulating that to the two-year schools, and then taking what they have at the two-year schools and articulating that to our four-year colleges across the state. So, there's exit points for work or entry points back to the education program. The other thing is we've got to develop a workforce economic development certification program for all of our workforce officers across the state. At our president's, we had the other day, we gave a grant, a job description of that particular person's role, duties, their responsibilities, also what type of experience we would require, education, et cetera, their preferred qualifications and minimum qualifications. And so, I think we're having the presidents kind of review that. And I'll just say that I've got a great task force, this work of me. We've got Dr. Lavender, Dr. Burrow, Dr. Ward, Larry Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson, so we replaced them today, with Dr. Linda Young and Dr. David Campbell. So, we've got two new people on our team, so we're going to get them into the sequence of what we're doing early next week, because we'll have another face-to-face meeting coming up very soon. So, we're excited about that certification program, and a lot of our presidents have already said they want to be the first cohort that goes through that class. It's going to be about six to nine months long. It's going to be pretty rigorous, it's going to be exciting for the people to come out, it's going to be a requirement for all of our workforce people to go through that. And then I think what we'll see is that those are, be some of our future leaders down the road, when we start looking at staffing our schools for other higher-level positions. The other thing I want to talk about too is we want to develop a world-class marketing campaign for really all of our career options in our two-year campuses. Some of the programs we'll use is STEM, First Robotics, other programs like that. We also are going to really use a program called Dream It, Do It, which is National Association of Manufacturers. It's a well-known program. I think I've got a couple of examples. We're going to show you what we did in Louisiana real quickly. And so, what this is, it's going to be, at the top, you can see there's some certifications. So, what we'll do is we'll tap in all of our certifications we have at all of our campuses, we'll map them out to your campuses. You'll be able to point in contact. If I'm sitting in Jasper and I don't really know what I want to do in my life, I could click on that, and I could find a campus, I can go get certification in manufacturing, or find other certifications related to that. I can also request additional information. We'll have a pull-down for students, parents, teachers, counselors, career coaches, et cetera, chambers, whatever, and these will be readily available for these people. We'll use this as a system. When we roll it out, we'll do a training across the state to refresh people how to use this. We'll build other print ad for times to get to them as well. You want to play the video real quickly? Okay. Thank you. So, Ronnie Bowles, who lives in the northern part of the state, actually, before I left Louisiana, he found out I was coming, he sent me a note, he gave us his website, he spent $50,000 on his website already. So, we're in the process of taking it and really ramping it up, putting on steroids where we can reach millennials with it. This is what it is right now. And so, what we'll be doing, and I've already talked to a lot of companies across the state, we'll actually go into their plants, get really good HD-quality video, interview some young people that have come through our colleges across the state, and they can be testimonials, little 60-second type of vignettes, and really promote our schools and promote, you know, so it's really good for a peer that's 23-years-old, that's come through our program, making $80,000 a year or whatever that amount would be, talking to another peer rather than a person of my age, talking to somebody about, hey, you need to get into manufacturing. So, so the stats we've seen and we've learned about is that we need that peer-to-peer relationship, so we're going to create that through our web tools. Thank you. So, with that, we're excited about moving that forward. The other thing we want to do is that we're going to be looking at our website as well internally. We actually have a, I think, a brainstorming next week to come together with a strategic plan for our marketing efforts that we have for Chancellor Baker and our system. One of the things we need to do is to promote what the board is doing and what the Chancellor's doing, is pulling together this great system that we have, so this kind of could be a launching pad for us to send people to come to our website and then go out to the schools' websites and find out more details wherever they might live across the state. And right now, it's not, it doesn't have that effort at this point, so we're looking forward to taking that to the next phase. We're also looking at different software packages. We've purchased one software package where we can do detailed data on labor, logistics cost, quantities, et cetera, looking at future trends, if that, that area is actually growing within certain types of occupations, which drives more industrial maintenance programs or less industrial maintenance programs or whatever, so we can use that to help us gauge what programs we need to have in those regions. We're looking at a CRM software package right now to better collect data. If we collect clean data, we can actually use that to make really good decisions on what we do with companies and the success of our operation and to return our investment. So, we're looking at a package that is very robust, some of the schools may be using already. It's got some, a really good national attention for the community college area, and also they have a really good price for community colleges throughout the United States. The other thing is we're looking at existing sites to maybe add new centers of excellence for manufacturing programs. We're currently working in the Mobile area right now. We're going to be using the AIDT Training Center down there for probably at least a year until we ramp up programs, and we'll make decisions later on after that. We're excited about that program. Our first class is going to be at the end of this month for that area of the state. We're also looking at different grant opportunities. I think Boone, he's probably already gone back across the street to see if we can get more money, but thanks to Chancellor Baker and the board members for helping us get what we can get. I think I'm really excited about that. I'll probably hear from higher ed friends later on why they didn't get money. But some of the, real quick projects that we're doing also in workforce development, then I'll get back into these goals too, is that we're working, I've met over 100 companies thus far across the state, large, medium, and small companies. We're working on a potential project with Mercedes, it's very large-scale apprenticeship project with Shelton State. If that occurs, I think it might be the very first of one like that in the United States that we've done, and it might excite them, and probably excite a lot of other German companies or European companies. We're working with Beadle State on another very large project. More news on that later. We had a really good meeting with Bishop at Ostell in the Maritime Center recently. We're going to be doing some asset mapping and some competency mapping with that company, where we can take Mobile County and the surrounding area and drive programs down into the lower grades that the Bishop, and then Bishop can prepare those students, and those students go straight to work without remedial training in maritime projects and welding and aluminum welding, et cetera. Very excited about working with Dr. Mitchell over at Selma on some dual enrollment programs that we're going to be doing in the Black Belt Counties. Working with Southern Union on some marketing programs for manufacturing jobs and driving students into those programs. I think you heard earlier how we're using different assets across the state to really use those assets to drive students into careers in, that come out of our programs across the state, manufacturing, healthcare, other programs. We're very excited about what we're able to do with that. We're also working with Southern Union, a very large manufacturing company, Need. There was a CEO in town from Austria a couple of weeks ago. He wasn't available to meet during the week, so we met. We had a long meeting on a Saturday afternoon, and we kind of plotted out some things that we can do for them through the two-year campuses. If that's successful, I think that's going to get our name and our recognition up there very, very high about delivering programs for them, where we'll do some very customized training for their machining, their operation, the preventive maintenance. training for their machining, their operation, the preventive maintenance, and actually helping them onboard people properly. We're actually working locally here in Montgomery with Trenton in the Chamber of Commerce on some cyber courses. We're starting those programs this month at a location downtown Montgomery. Working with the Department of Commerce on several large projects, two large aerospace projects and one very, very large IT project. Other activities, the, as I mentioned earlier, about the hosting of the assets that we have, the robotic technology park where we had career counselors, teachers, we had 130 high school students there, and then the Maritime Training Center was very successful with 350. I'm going to shift to, well, first, any questions so far? I'm going to shift to ATN goals and objectives. No questions? So under the ATN umbrella, we're going to improve the competitive position of Alabama's small, medium manufacturers with focus on very small manufacturers, rules, and startups. I think that's where we can really generate a lot of jobs through those small startup companies throughout the state. Champion Manufacturing in Alabama as well. There's a lot of companies that really lean on ATN and us to help them be successful and learn new technologies. We're going to also contribute to and learn from nationally, regional, state, local manufacturing ecosystems and partnerships that we have, and operate as a high-performing learning organization. And I think that'd be very good in streamlining programs. And the adult ed, shifting over to that, what we're going to be doing, we'll work with David Walters and his team, where we're going to be doing a process flow mapping, really laying out everything that we do, making sure we're the most efficient team that we can be, eliminating duplicate steps, duplicate processes, and making sure we're advanced with automation to be more efficient. We're going to increase the number of Alabamians with high school equivalencies, our GEDs, expand pathways for adult education partnerships to earn a high school equivalency while also earning stackable credentials. What we're wanting to do is add the Ready to Work program, and then once they get through that program, have that tied into one of our national certification programs that we're doing, either MSSC or NCCER programs. We're also going to create and expand bridge programs in adult education for Alabamians that are in basic skill deficits. And then last but not least, it's exciting that we're going to be building a very strong prison-to-employment pipeline, working with Annette and Susan. We're going to be able to go in and kind of offer programs that have never been offered before, that will prepare these people, these men and women, to get a job and to get a skill where they come out and they can be in, you know, very well positioned to get a job and move it forward. That's the end of my update. I was going to pass it over to Susan. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I was going to ask you, I was looking at the key indicators for ATN, and, you know, read them, they look more subjective. Is there some way to tie some of that to it?
Absolutely.
And see what the pipeline is now and give a measure of progress.
Absolutely. We have some very strong KPIs there, so we have some baseline, so we can actually add into that as well. So I'll make it up. Thank you.
In the prison education, I would expect that we would be a little bit limited on what we can offer because of just having resources, new locations, or is that, what do we expect there?
Right. So if I can kind of pick up on what we're talking about with prison ed. Yeah, we do have some limitations. What we primarily offer are adult education courses, but we also can offer some career and technical education. We don't offer the transfer courses for some pretty obvious reasons. But some of our locations are site-bound or place-bound, so that does limit what we can offer, but most of them have your welding, your plumbing, your HVAC, pretty much your hard trades, because frankly, those are easier for someone who is paroled to get a job in that particular area. But as Mr. Baker said a little bit earlier, what started as a review of Ingram and the prison ed program there has really evolved into a comprehensive review of all of our offerings across the system. We have actually five institutions that offer both adult education and career and technical education behind the walls in prisons close to their location. We also have three other institutions that offer adult education only behind the walls, and they are considering expanding to career and technical education. So far, what we have learned is there are some of the best practices that we do out there. At the same time, there is a lot of room for improvement, and much of this, if we are going to succeed with this prison-to-pipeline, I'm prison-to-employment pipeline initiative, is we've got to establish those strong relationships with our partners and stakeholders. And that means corrections, that means parts and paroles, it means the judges, it means all of those who are in touch in some way, shape, or form of correctional education, or correctional education. Our focus, then, is really four areas: enrollment, retention, completion, and finally, employment. And the funny thing is, employment is probably where we are the weakest, and that's kind of the most important, right? I mean, what's all the training for if we cannot assist those folks once they are paroled or released to get employment and not become repeat offenders back into the system? So that is going to be our focus as we move forward. Chancellor Baker also mentioned that we are going to have a little bit more oversight on correctional education. That is not a reflection on the quality of any of our programs, but we do really need to monitor them from the system office, particularly since so much of this depends on those high-level discussions with those stakeholders.
Well, I think it's exciting the potential we have to affect the entire state, the budgets of the state, workforce of the state. I mean, this is a win-win, and it seems to be an untapped resource and something that we, from just a social perspective, absolutely need to succeed in.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yep. You've heard this, probably here several more times. In the halls of legislature, there's a lot of talk about centralized outcomes. The arguments that I've heard have not been over money, where do you reside the program? So a lot of them won't sit in the higher ed, different places, a lot of them part of the labor. And I still think there's an opportunity for us to take the base that we have, with dealer own, with our certificate, with our non-certificate, and then evolve that into where if I'm a manufacturer and I need anything to be taken, I know who to call. Right now, companies, manufacturers, you can call the headhunter, they usually pay 50% of their first-year salary as a fee, and I think we can evolve this as to self-funding if we can roll that out of manufacturing, not a big fee, but enough to keep the program going. Like I said, the conversations over there have not been about money, where the numbers at. So I still think there's an opportunity.
Yeah, I think so. I think a lot of the conversation right now is more related to the multitudinous data pays, the Answers Program, which will house some of this data, but not all of that, right? So, and I think our goal is really to get the companies into our schools, and our schools into the companies, where they, before these students actually complete that certification or degree or diploma, that company's had the opportunity to kind of get in front of them and market those jobs. And so they kind of know those grads before they actually graduate. And where we've done this successfully in other states is that basically, they almost offer jobs before they complete their programs. And so, but your point is well-taken. I think that we can actually do that very easily for these companies without, but I think the whole longitudinal program is a well-needed program that we need to support and pass around the state, because it has so many other elements that we need to try. And it's a good report card of what we're doing, quite frankly.
In a past life, I did this. I picked up a phone and called State Louisiana, and they told me where to go. I don't want to go Louisiana, I don't want to hear anybody else.
I don't want you going there either, sir.
It's one of the things, it may not be the appropriate place for it, and we've had some discussions, Jeff, about it, but hearings from the boards, soft skills, ability to pass the drug test and continue to pass the drug test. We've talked a lot in our career tech programs about, you know, how do we begin to, do we even get to think about incorporating some of those requirements? Not only do you get a certificate, but you begin to take drug tests while you're in school and you're passing those. I've made the comment in meetings we've been in that we require our high school-aged students to take drug tests to play football, play basketball. Again, we have people completing our programs that go to industry in Alabama, but they can't pass a drug test, they don't know how to get along with their peers, they don't have the soft skills, so they cannot remain in court regardless of how technical ability they have. So I would, I don't know if that's a, this is a proper place to put that in, if that's a goal or not, and that's obviously, that's a big step, I recognize, to do some of that.
Well, actually, in budget theory, I told the budget committee, we were looking, we're serious about that, and we need to continue this conversation. We just hadn't figured out exactly how to approach it. But I think it's important, and I know I've got a couple of sons, grandson, in high school, and any student that participates in any, any extra career activity, whatever, must take a drug test. But we've been having the conversation, how do we best approach the soft skills and drug issues? We're committed to that proposition, we just want to make sure we make this decision clearly.
Yeah, I think, I think the point is that, you know, at the meeting that we were at last Friday, and, you know, certain KPIs, key performance indicators that companies have, we need to push those down into our schools, but we also need to be realistic and try to get it down into our K-12 that feed us, right? And because, and we actually had discussion about this yesterday in the Alabama Workforce Council. What we're doing for our new nationally-recognized programs, we're actually putting the Ready to Work as a prerequisite, so they come out with those employable skills. And I think, and we're adding rigor, we're actually moving some things around, so it adds a little bit more rigor to it. And then upon completion of that, they can enroll into our certifications. So when they come out, we don't have the drug test in there yet, you know, as you know, we've talked a lot about that, and we continue to talk about that more, but I think your point is very valid.
Support your, wherever you end up, you've got to do that, I think. I suspect I have a late this afternoon, and it could fit, and I'll guarantee you, you'll ask me what, why we should make the conversation.
It's important, and I, you know, I may not leave the way, but I think we can set an example, I think, because it's just be very thoughtful.
We don't want to drag that too long. We're serious about it.
We, we are, we are.
Good point, because the conversations I've had over there, that legislators are starting hearing from business, and then that we're giving scholarships, we're doing this, and when they come out, they hire, they've got the certification, they're doing a good job. So that is a very real conversation.
I mean, I'm going to industry that I work with and people who own businesses that are interviewing people, finding that they on paper have the skills, and these folks are basically saying, yes, I want to come to work for you, knowing they're going to take a drug test the next day, and knowing they're not going to pass it yet. It's insane. I mean, it's a culture we absolutely have to change, and we've got to start earlier and change that.
Correct. Any other, any other questions about workforce, I'm going to yield it back to up here for us.
All right, well, the next four, I'm going to cover kind of all together, because they're all student success measures. And what I want to do is provide an overall framework for those and tell you kind of how we identified these and why we're looking at these student success measures, and then cover one area from each one of those measures, and then open it up for questions. But student success is really why we're here, and wanted to be able to set up the students for their next step, whether it's a transfer to university, employment, or if they're just coming back as an incumbent worker for training. And the way we identified these student success measures is we took some time and evaluated the strategic plans from our colleges to see what they were doing in terms of measuring student success, because that's really what they're focused on, and they're really good at it. And all the institutions we looked at had phenomenal measures and are keeping track of it, and do all those things that we talked about in terms of setting, you know, where are we setting the target and demonstrating where we're going. And that's what we're looking to do comprehensively at the system office as well, and as we evaluate and update our website, hoping to have that transparency for a comprehensive look at how we're doing with these student success measures. The other key piece I wanted to mention is that we've looked very closely, as did our colleges, as many of them are partnering with the American Association of Community Colleges on the voluntary framework of accountability, and you often hear it as VFA, and it's really setting up, it's just what it says, a framework for that accountability, to show that, you know, you're assessing your performance, looking at how you can improve, and then how you're dedicated to your mission, and it's always looking at that continuous improvement piece. One thing that we did feel very, and did very deliberately, is that oftentimes when you look at your goal of access, sometimes within that access goal, college readiness is included in there. Because we feel very strongly in Alabama that we, as the Alabama Community College System, have a responsibility to work with our K-12 partners to reduce that need of remediation, we wanted to break that out into its own separate goal. So as you'll see, the first student success measure goal on here is college readiness. And what I wanted to highlight with that, and we've talked, and you've heard Dr. Robinson provide updates to you on this as well, about some pilots that we're working on with K-12, because we really believe it's important to partner with them, and we have some pilots going on. If we can reduce that remediation before they even come to us, so we, the fewer development on classes that we have to offer, the quicker we can get students through their program, you know, to transfer or to employment. So we think it's very important that we have that responsibility to partner with K-12 to mitigate that need for remediation. So we have some pilots that we're working on now, and we can certainly provide you updates, I mean, in the future on that one. So for access, the piece I wanted to highlight for you, and it came up in your board meeting today when you were talking about one of the colleges' requests for facilities increases. So what we wanted to include is a key indicator of progress, is we continue to analyze our net price for the Alabama Community College System for students to attend. We've had many conversations, and you know it's a national issue in terms of student debt, and I know you've all been very cognizant and very deliberate in trying to mitigate the costs for students to attend, again, because that's very important for an open-access system like we are. So that is one of the other key indicators that we're including under access. The other piece I wanted to highlight about these indicators is we have a balanced mix, and what you'll see in here oftentimes is hard to react to, is the lagging indicators. We do have lagging indicators in here in terms of retention and graduation, but you'll also see throughout these, as well, some leading indicators that we can monitor throughout a student's time with us, to, you know, kind of predict how they're doing and put some interventions in place. They also often call it intrusive advising, or ways to get to the students, that if you see that there's issues or trouble with the student potentially not meeting whatever educational goal they have, and being able to jump in instead of waiting and looking at your graduation rate isn't as high as you want, well, what do you do when the student may have already left? So including some of these leading indicators within our student success measures, we feel is very important, and many of our colleges are already using those in a very effective way. So that's part of access. For retention, just again, real quick, three of the five are leading indicators. I'm looking at overall success rates, establishing thresholds for both part-time students and full-time students, and you've probably seen the research on full-time students are more likely to complete. So the more students we can get closer to full-time enrollment, and then that persistence, the more likely they are to attain and to move on. So we're looking at all of those and trying to implement strategies to help students with that. The last one I want to take a little bit longer to talk about, and it's kind of been a theme from the governor's announcement yesterday, so almost everything that you heard today in terms of completion. Oftentimes, when you hear completion, and when the voluntary framework came out, some of you said, well, performing, or outcome measures or outcomes funding, when that starts becoming, you know, a hot, community colleges, sometimes we shift in our seats a little bit, because if you look at our success just being students that graduate, a lot of times the student's intention when they come to us isn't to get a two-year degree. It might be that training for workforce or a certificate, or just enrichment. So looking at a way that we can monitor those pieces. So what we've really looked at in terms of our completion goal is to broaden that definition to those workforce certificates, to our short-term, long-term certificates, as well as our two-year degree programs, being very important. Again, that will all help in terms of that '65 to 2025 and meeting that goal. The last part I want to highlight about completion, before we open up for questions on these student success measures, is the fourth key indicator down there, because oftentimes the work that we do is very, you know, we talk a lot about workforce. So a lot of our academic transfer programs So a lot of our academic transfer programs tend to get overshadowed. What I want to share with you is that our academic transfer programs are extremely strong and are very beneficial to our colleges in terms of build that product mix to help us fund some of our more expensive programs, but more importantly, we have a great number of students that come to us for that affordability, then the transfer to a four-year institution, and that will be one of the pieces that we look at as a key indicator as well, because not only are we doing well in it, we're going to certainly do better, but I always don't want to lose sight that that is another key component of what we do in the community college system. And then Jeff and I will arm wrestle and behind the scenes, we'll share those pieces.
We'll sell tickets for about that.
Russ had this one, you probably deal with academic transfer and not to underemphasize that. You know, I, I know all of the things that we have to offer, that they all need to be emphasized, but, but that, I, I think that, that's been one of the key benefits of the particular system and all that, and I, there's someone that took advantage of that. And it's just, and it's just so natural with the cost of higher ed, of sending students, that we'll eventually be able to, or pause.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I followed the same path. Any questions about the student success measures?
Any other questions? If not, just.
As long as I have.
Anything else from, from the board, I'm asking, are there questions or anything?
Chancellor, thank you, Susan, Russ, and Jeff, thank you so much for, for this, for the presentation, and we look forward to this evolving and hearing more about it. Thanks everyone for your attendance here and your interest in what's going on. Is there anything else to come? If not, we'll stand adjourned. Thanks again.